Not only is it good for the city because it proves that the city has been invested in and jobs are being created, but it also means that the city is bringing in extra revenue. And that extra revenue means that we can then use that to pay for the services that we want for the people within the city, the very vulnerable people that we want to support. And if you look at, you know, what we've done, that invest away, just alone in terms of, those figures are made, those figures, they're figures that are there for all to see. On housing alone, we've generated and created eight million pounds here in new council tax revenue. It's eight million pounds we never had before. And, you know, if we look at, you know, what we've also done with the invest away, and remember, let's remember, you know, council, council is a little democratic group, I don't know whether they believe this, they can't remember, you can forget, not, don't remember what's about to be said. But I don't know whether they did oppose Q and R, might have opposed Q and R at the time of Finch Farm. Let's hope you can't remember yourself. Well, let me tell you that Finch Farm, Q and R, the housing that we've built, has brought in twelve million pound extra revenue into our city. That's what we've done, twelve million pounds. And of course, you all know, you know, the story of the yellow tax, thirty thousand pound tax. And it's fantastic because you can boil a tomato in it and stuff like that, it's fantastic, the tax. But the building is now worth twenty-seven million pound end debt. The library building has just been sold for forty million, so I guess that when we got that price a year ago, twenty-seven million pound, that the building is worth a lot more, probably in excess of thirty-five million. But then, let's have a look at what we've done. Last night, we had the law for civil rights and the British Museum experience. This is going to be a fantastic asset for our city. Brilliant in terms of bringing in tourists into our city, bringing in new investments and new jobs, and bringing in a red roll of around about, as I say, two million pounds, when they finally opened with the stuff that they're also putting in to the Q and R building. It was something that we're delighted with, and something that we're proud of. But, you know, we'll remind our opposition colleagues about the attacks on, not, some opposition, the opposition, who attacked us by Q and R building and also Finch Farm. And then, you know, when we look at the things that we do, the car park that we've built, and the car parking spaces that we've created, is desperately needed, and it will bring in a revenue of round about nine hundred and twenty. The new car park that we've built in Victoria Street will bring in around about four hundred thousand pounds. So you can see how the invest away strategy worked rather than leaving it all cracked up and you couldn't park in there and you needed wellings every day. And some people didn't park in there. We're going to get new revenue coming into the city. And let's not forget, by the way, that all the money that comes in through the car parks actually is used for our transport and infrastructure. And I don't know whether the adults are driving around the city, kind of the hot hoes are getting bigger, and the gag in Fulham is getting bigger, and we've got more money. So everything we raise is able, and should be able to actually help us support the roads' infrastructure programme. And then, you know, the cruise liner terminal, we've negotiated some land with Peel. Again, some that probably many in this chamber wouldn't want to have given that the attack appeal. But we've negotiated some land, we're going to be building a new cruise liner terminal there, as it brings in lots of revenue, including a new hotel and a new car park. Now there, the Isle of Man government have worked with us, we've been over, being the T and Z, we've been over to the Isle of Man. The Isle of Man have built a new terminal just a little bit further down with an embassy, and the whole waterfront deal that we're getting, around about thirty-three million pounds spent on new road infrastructure to connect the whole waterfront with the Thames League is absolutely brilliant show now. Invest away, and the imagination, and the creativity, and the vision of the council is actually worth bringing in that extra money. So as I said, if you look at what we've also doing in terms of working with partners, and working with people to keep the city growing, and making sure that we're able to invest, not just protecting people, but able to provide the quality services and do things differently. And, you know, I haven't even mentioned the fact that we had the Wake Country Aquatic Centre, that was two million pounds here, inherited by the Liberal Democrats, that we've still got another eleven years to pay it off. I haven't mentioned the fact that we've got Parkford School, another millstone round our neck as well, and other PFI things. But what we're doing, and again, things that are attacked by the Liberal Democrats, who try to claim that the hubs, the football hubs, and the grass is not safe, it's all going through all the proper scrutiny tests and all the proper tests, and we couldn't dare do anything with any of that facilities that affected our children's health and wellbeing. But it's seventeen, that's what the problem is, you see, because they can't, they can't stand the fact that despite those challenges, this is one of the most successful administrations this city has ever had, can't stand that. So the money that we're spending, seventeen million pounds, it's money that we've negotiated with Sports England, and we're investing ourselves, that will go across the city. And that's what we should be proud of. And we're also, you know, the leisure centres within our city face a deficit of one point five million. You know, the others that say and argue, let's close them and save that money, and lose jobs, and outsource them. We're saying no, because not only are we going to put and keep them open, but we're going to be investing in them. And we'll highlight shortly where that investment is going to be within the city, what we'll be investing, because it's invest away, because the facilities are old, they were dealt with by the Liberal Democrats in the previous administration, because the Wake Country Aquatic Centre, if somebody's wanted, that they wanted, that left us with a debt. So no investment, but we'll deal with that by working with Sports England and developing and investing in our city. And then, as I said, you know, two million pounds a year in the budget for street seeing quality improvement. And well done, council, for having the team up and standing up to Tesco. Again, big piece in the Echo today, a little piece about the V A yesterday, but a big massive piece of the Echo. Well, congratulations to council, to have the Tesco off, for stopping people, firing people, for dropping them. And that's actually what we should be doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, don't drop what's there. So that's, again, an investment that's going into the city. And then when you look at, you know, the major projects, Paddington Village, let's remind again people just an important point about how we're able to develop Paddington Village and what it's going to generate. Because I mentioned before about the three hundred and fifty million pound that was taken away from building schools for the future. What you've delivered, twelve new schools, three brand new secondary schools a year, more than the last thirteen years in this council. That's what you've delivered, twelve new schools, two special schools, and investments in the primary sector. And despite what's happened over the winter, they'll have a brand new school up there in Oxfordshire as well. So something that we should be proud of. But what we did was we used that school site in the old significance site, the Paddycon site, and we're turning that into a village. We've got lots of people interested, and we've also got lots of commitment to invest in that, the Royal College of Physicians for instance, a language school, and many, many other things that are happening there. And as I said, the cruise liner terminal with a new car park, Harvard Hotel, Edley being transformed, we have to look at it, it's fantastic. You remember when that was in deadlock, when the London City Council with the Liberal Democrats were taking their own to call? Do you remember that? I knew them all then, this administration, me sat down with them and got it. It's happened. Thames League, what we've just announced recently, in terms of the Thames League there, because the Walter Porter is so successful, so we need to actually find another porter. Some of that land, we own, working in partners with others to actually create a really vibrant area, especially with the developments around the north of the site. And then, Marwood Tower, I remember when driving past them and seeing that and looked at it and said, why are you pulling it down? So we've now got investments in it, and it's, and it aches anybody to go up and have a look at it, because it's absolutely fantastic, and it's the type of thing that we should be doing in terms of housing in the future, actually because. Project Jennifer, another project that was stalled. And the reason why I've invested in these is because these are one of our generating wealth and growth and business and jobs for our city, and that's the twin track of growth that we've had, protected the vulnerable and grown the economy. Next week, I remember when Winton used to be called the John. Well, next week, we'll go to Winton, completely and totally paid for by the private sector, no cost to the council, and while they're out there, there'll be significant announcements made about jobs and growth within the city. That's why we're going, we're doing this, going out, a cup of tea on the yacht, as people used to do. We're going there to actually work on a delivery of investments and projects, so I'm looking forward to that happens next week. But, you know, I wanted to look at in terms of culture, you know, this year, we've got armed forces, they've come in here. As a direct result of what we do in this city, that whether it's the Giants, whether it's the Three Queens, whether it's the Limp Festival, you know, people are so amazed by what we do in putting on events, that we've actually won armed forces, they've come in here. But if you look at the things that we've also done in terms of to support the retail sector, because, and also the tourism and hospitality sector, and that's why the cruise liner terminal, that's why the V A experience in Q and R are important to us, and that's why everything that we do, rather than slashing vehicles yet, we invest in it. And we look at new ways, you know, look at what we've done with the likes of the Everland Theatre. It wouldn't have happened without our state, it just simply wouldn't have happened, the Royal Court simply wouldn't have happened without our investments in terms of negotiating the lease and allowing them to borrow on the spare. The Exman Theatre closed for a long time with no possibility of opening. And also, the Royal Philharmonic Orchestra and the ability that they've had to be able to shape their new buildings to actually accommodate the growth. Clearly, they've put back an amount of money, over fifty-two million pounds, supported, bringing forty-seven GBA, four point seven visitors coming to our city, as I mentioned, that investment and the things that we're doing, absolutely crucial to the local economy and to culture and tourism in our city. And as I said yesterday, and he said, as I'm getting asked in Cokesby quite often, when he says, and I said, that arts and culture and tourism are the rocket fuel for this city in terms of job and prosperity. But not only that we provide things to do, building on the capital of culture in two thousand and eighteen, but actually enhancing our offer here. And that's why we protect our buildings and spend fifty, sixty million pounds in supporting buildings, old buildings, and bringing them back into use, including the Royal Exchange Building on the corner of North John Street, which is now the old hotel. Again, what we did in our invest away strategy. And that's what we inherited by the Queen in the, Mr Bruce Stacey himself, the city. And remember that we left the streets like war zones. And don't forget the headline a couple of weeks before that was the One Star State. Remember when this council was labelled by the Order Commission as only one star? That was with money swimming around the council. They were still not able to actually manage the wonderful matters of the city council in a way of dealing with growth. So that's the Bootsers thing that I liked it for the world. Bootsers things is in for the world. Mr Bruce? Thanks to you and your colleagues in that particular area. So there you go, from me, as I said, some really difficult choices that we've had to make. But, you know, one of the things that the presentation was trying to explain is how, in those difficult times, we've opted to do what I think we've done really, really well, given the circumstances and the cause that we've been dealt. And what I would like to say, just using that sort of analogy of cards being dealt, we've got no more real cards to play by twenty twenty twenty, we've got no more excerpts to use or stuff. But I think, you know, when people talk to us about fighting back and standing up for people, every single day we do that. Every single day this administration stands up and fights for people and works hard for people. That's why we're able to do that. And tomorrow, the Minister for Adult Social Care, Mr Mallard, is meeting myself and Samir to discuss the adult social care problem in Liverpool. So, you know, we all the time raise issues and fight and argue our case, and we're successful. Because let's be clear, without the no detriment clause that I got into, that pilot study, that business pilot, we'd be making serious cuts into services of all the sector, adult social care. So that's what we do, and people give us no credit for that. And certainly, as far as I'm concerned, that is something that we've got to try and explain to people, the situation that we find. For every single day, we're fighting on there, we are. And that's why, you know, a track record of delivery, that's what that is, it's a track record of delivery and a promise of war. When I was given the first draft budget before Christmas, there was something around about five hundred jobs being expected to be cut, and there was fourteen percent in adult social care to be cut. And there was many, many other things, like the C R U and all of those things that were going to be cut. And since then, we've just, you know, I said, of course, that we were to deal with that and rejected it. And yes, there are going to be three hundred job losses. And that is something that, I'm sure it does appear it breaks our heart that we're going to have to lose another three hundred members of staff. But it could have been so much worse with the Tories in power, or with us being tougher and protective of people. And that's what we are about. That's why that partnership with our trade unions, as I mentioned at the start, is so important. And that's why there's been no compulsory redundancies, no. And it couldn't be dead easy, dead easy for this administration to actually say when people were going for V A R, we're not paying you at the top rate, we're going to make you redones, and we're paying at the low rate. And it's cost us tens of millions of pounds, tens of millions of pounds worth it. Because the people that we've lost have been dedicated, loyal, and hardworking. So I'm happy to take questions on the budget. It explains the circumstances within the papers. People have had the chance to come to Cabinet, people have had the chance to come to Wardes Select Committee, not many people did. So, you know, we've tried to answer in the most honest way that we can. But what I would say to you is that I recommend with a heavy heart the budget before you and ask you to support it. Thank you.
Have we got any questions for Meryl Anderson? Steve?
Just one question for us, Steve. Joe, when you say with the opposition's joining some of the working parties, the answer as before, the Liberal Party as the construction opposition, will be happy to support. And in particular, we have quite strong views on how we could actually make libraries broad community facilities, rather than just pure library. As you all know, we work to define supporting the library interest on the whistle. It's a greater function, a greater benefit as well, and all costs effective. So, yes, the Liberal Party will, and I wish you would stop lobbying all the oppositions together. You should know better. And with that quirk making, I did take the opportunity to meet you brightly and did make some suggestions about potential sites that could be used to release around playgrounds and block some housing sites, and also potentially interlaid. In this, she will come back to us on those, because we did have some constructive meetings with assignments on one of those sites. When we talk about sports centres, one of the things I always notice is a lot of private sector are now offering more competitive portfolio of hours than our own lifestyle gyms. And one of the things we did fund in Chubro was extra hours of people going to attract that name plus. And we would want, certainly whilst there was investment in life and health and that, but we'd also like the Labour Party to look at how to make it often more attractive and competitive, not just in price. Lastly, and as you know, I always have a beef about dairy land sites. In two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, and two thousand and sixteen, we received publications with your name, I'm not sure if they wrote them, saying that the one of the largest dairy sites lighting our city's Carlton was to be immediately demolished. Is there actual real progress on that claim, which clearly immediately demolished, I don't think, twice as high as two years? Now, since the site owners not carrying out their legal duty with regard to the evasive species of Japanese knotweed, can the council not use its powers to get the site to do a more responsible ownership?
Yeah, a couple of things, Councilman. First, and folks, yes, I'd be delighted if you were to join any of the task groups, but there's the only All Stop Shops for the libraries, you know, we'd be delighted, I'm sure. Council Simon would welcome you onto libraries, task group, as well as the All Stop Shops. With regards to common sense and communication with you around what we do with letter, yes, I have had that conversation with you. Yes, that conversation and what we discussed is still very much in our plans and in our thoughts. And with regards to the Carlton, can I just say that when we said that hopefully it would be done, it was done in good faith. And what happened was, of course, things went wrong, as often is the case with private sector, and people go into liquidation and things happen. But what I can say here is that I'm confident that things are moving in the right direction, and indeed I'll get the knowledge to provide you with a update in the next seventy-two months.
Okay, any further questions? No. So, I've been made aware of two amendments have been received. The first amendment will be coming from the Council of Tom Crome. The Director of Finance and Soutas can advise the council that this amendment is lawful. So this is attached to the note as appendix B as circulated. So before we call the amendment and to assist me, can those members who wish to speak the amendment please indicate to me now? Okay, we've got two amendments, which can, yeah, okay. So, the first amendment, and the Council of Tom Crome, can you move your hand? And is the amendment seconded? Thank you.
Well, there. Frankly, I can't see social services surviving after two years. That's the absolute maximum. If we don't do something within the next six months, I believe social services will not exist by twenty eighteen, nineteen. This isn't scaremongering, this isn't me asking you to feel sad for me. Whoever is making decisions out there has looked at social care as a syndrome of the service, which means more and more people are staying at home with high needs because of the removal of the prevention agenda. People are struggling, people are suffering, and we're really only seeing the tip of the iceberg. Those aren't my words, but the words of my colleagues. These are the words of our respected Director of Adult Social Care, Sandy Callicott. In recent months, newspaper headlines and broadcasters soundbites, the screen for social care is in crisis. It needs an urgent injection of cash to cope with the increasing demand of an aging population, increasing our expectancy, and a growing funding gap. With this in mind, we're proposing calling for a referendum for a nine percent council tax increase. If we get a referendum this time, we won't be calling for a referendum triggering rise for the next two years. We're fronting the increase so future smaller rises are applied to a larger base rate, instead of you do not have a one for one costly referendum. Why nine percent? Despite the failure by the Met to promote the council referendum, which will be happening tax wise, during his half-hearted online consultation, forty-two percent of participants declared themselves in favour of the proposed ten percent. We believe that with concerted, fully informed campaigns, majority of people would support a nine percent increase, especially when the amount of vital services that could be provided by the additional revenue is spelled out. The additional council tax rise is equivalent to seventy-four per week for the majority of households in Liverpool, and will raise just shy of an extra six million pounds. As well as the council tax rise, we will make reductions to the highest paid senior staff salaries, and the latter paid elected mayor and male leaders. We will make further savings by scrapping free parking for councillors. This would be an administration showing leadership in the bike and air pollution, rather than what we've scrapped bus lanes, channeled sorts down mature trees to build a multi-story car park, flogged off green space development, and then announced in the back of a flat package policies about banning diesel cars in eight years' time. You really shouldn't make it up. It would only be fair to mention at this point that the leader of the Lit Den showed clearly why he stands for British and when he voted in favour of removing the trees in Victoria Street or a new three hundred thirty space car park, which will increase traffic and air pollution in the city centre. The extra revenue brought in through our proposals will enable us to prevent a number of cuts to communities, which will help keep Liverpool cleaner and safer. For example, we will reverse a plan three hundred thousand pound cut to environmental health. This will do more to promote cleanliness and safety in our neighbourhood than any throwaway notion of letting people off their council tags if they get information about dog fowling. Contrast the green commitment to environment versus labour policy on the hoof. We will prevent any departmental cuts to adult social care and children and young people services, which are among the most stretched departments in the council. As well as reversing departmental cuts, there will remain three point five million pounds to allocate providing frontline care to the most vulnerable children and older people in our city, including free care packages for our elders. Our is a bold budget proposal, which would help protect social care and essential frontline services dealing with basic cleanliness and safety in our communities, where we want it to be bold. We also want to change the governance structure. We've not been allowed to include this in our budget amendment, but we're signaling now and clear that we want the current posture of Mayor of Liverpool to be scrapped, and indeed for the whole system of governance, including male leading posts, to be reviewed with the aim for the much leaner and less costly version being in place at the earliest opportunity. This is especially important, given the fact that in a couple of months' time, we'll have three men. The situation is clearly absurd and needs to be addressed. Protecting social care, cleanliness, basic hygiene, safety, these are all key aspects of this budget amendment and fundamental responsibilities of the local authority. A vote against this amendment is a vote for a flight of leave, cutting staff numbers in departments that are already on a huge strain, and denying the care that could return dignity to our most vulnerable residents. I therefore urge you to support this amendment.
Thank you. Do you want to second the motion now? Okay, okay. I've got two speakers, Councilman and to Councilman. Councilman, first please.
I won't take up on my vote. We will be voting against this amendment, and we'll do so for three reasons. The first two of which were made very clear in the presentation that the Mayor of Liverpool made to us before. The first reason is that in The first reason is that in this city, we are, have people, ninety-seven percent of people, live in council tax and A, B and C. That creates problems in the amount that we can raise from council tax. But it's also a fact that they are in B in particular because they're living in areas of considerable poverty in this city. If I lived in Surrey, I'd have no hesitation in going for a referendum. If a suburb said I lived in Whitney, I'd have no hesitation in going for a referendum. Because that is largely wealthier, obviously wealthy but wealthier people, who can pay a higher amount. But given the unfairness of council tax, this would be the very poor paid for the extreme poor. That is not an option that I could tolerate any more than we need to in this city. The second reason is that we've had a mini referendum. And although you could say it wasn't a massive exercise, it was an attempt in the discussions, consultation about the budget to find out what people wanted. I remember the figure, fifty-seven percent said clearly they would not support a ten percent council tax increase, but not for this year, it must be said, for next year. And I've no doubt at all, based on that evidence, but common sense, is that what they would do again. And just the last thing I might say is about adult social care. Clearly, this council, like every other, or almost every other, is in a very difficult position. But there is a lot of good news in that, which is why I don't support the analysis that Council of Crome has given us, that adult social care is going to come to a end. We know that the Better Care Fund has been reorganised. And so, increasingly over the next three years, as you can see from the budget documents, we will get proportionately more. We've lost a bit from the new homes bonus, but nowhere near as much as conservative districts have. And we gain somewhat on adult social care through the Better Care Fund and the realignment, but it's not just on crude numbers, but on need. And there also may be some good news in today's budget. I'm not going to ask the Lord, the Mayor, to say what precisely is moved, because I suspect we won't know until the consultation documents come out. But apparently, two billion pounds' worth of new money is, two billion pounds of new money over the next three years is coming into adult social care. That's good. You could not have chosen a better day for meeting the Minister for Adult Social Care than tomorrow to try and find out whether that two billion is going. But when I met him, which I have done on three occasions, I made it very clear that he understood where our tax base was. And we're not just crying wolf and demanding more money, so we splurge it. We do actually need that money, which we cannot raise, even if we were allowed to raise council tax by an unlimited amount through a council tax on a city where so many people live, on, near or even under the rail line. So, for those three reasons, my Lord Mayor, we will vote against this amendment.
Thank you, Councilor Kent. Councilor Busher?
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. I think it's very good of you to say that you're supporting poor people. Perhaps you could explain, have a conversation between yourselves, bad ways, and then put one of your group to say you should get over it all, but at the same time, you're sort of... But I would like to say, just on this point really, you're a man, we need to find out the new pounds spent in the next three years. And you've presented all your budget supplement with all the preparation that you've had to do. You found four hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred pounds, so well done. But I, so, I'm really one, isn't it? It's just a political window, just maybe, whatever you're saying, you're trying to score some political points. But there's one thing that I do want to say. Oh, can I bring it? Just to get upset, that.
Stephen, stop that. You have speed, Stephen.
I didn't have to speak to the second man.
Can you speak to both? You're saving, you're saving your life. Saving itself, fine. Okay, Stephen, please.
I think the first and most important thing to say is to thank the Green Party for their Democrats for a massive vote of confidence in Labour's budget. Because they have, haven't they? They're not proposing any serious changes when we're addressing finally ninety percent of gas. There's no real alternative consent, no new ideas, nothing. So, I, it would be nice if you'd be able to say, Joan, Cabinet, officers, the rest, you've done an amazing job, yet again, you've saved our city. Particularly, it would be nice to thank Amy, Councilor Kent, and his colleagues, the misery the air party has inflicted on the city. It is really important to say that, because the opposition party is, sorry, Councilor that, but...
Some of them are shit.
Two of the opposition parties are saying no serious alternative to the budget. And they never have. What will die in the worst period, the worst financial crisis this city has ever faced, no serious attempt to go to the back. No, I think we're good, I think we've done a great job. But I honestly do think the notion is saying this, Mayor. I'm sure there could have been better ideas on one or two things that we've come up with. Sorry, just to take it, it's not crisis, it's just possible somebody might come up with better ideas, but they didn't even attempt it. So, thanks, really appreciate the very confidence. Secondly, forgive me, Councilor, because I know you're interested in promoting radio. I want to explain some things about language to the Green Party, but maybe you've fallen off with them when you discuss what you're in charge of them. There's a difference between cuts and savings that you seem to have it the long way round. For example, you talk about cuts for children and people services, which I think, Councilor Busher thinks, removing children from out-of-city placements and getting them to foster care, I'd say that's a saving, not a cut. Right, and it's something that we want to do. But when it comes to reducing the labour fund by twenty-five percent, there's nothing other one calling that a cut, it's not a saving, you can't do twenty-five percent. So, it's going back, for example, on some youth provision in St Michael's Wharf, which is funded. It's a cut, and it's a really bad cut, because the labour fund funds really important services. It's crucial for the youth provision, lots of environmental stuff, it's an unashamed cut. Looking at some of the other cuts you talk about, because I know my portfolio, just to explain a bit, the other point I want to make, which is obvious, but needs saying, setting a budget is hard, delivering is far more difficult. And I'm absolutely sure, we won't deliver all the savings that we're setting the budget, we'll have to find other ways of doing it. It's always like that, particularly when you're looking at a budget on the scale. But I don't have a problem about looking at introducing a premium service for dogs. So, I don't really know why you would. Because everyone's always out of their head. Maybe it's right, Brian. And looking at environmental health and licensing and public protection, I gather there's some bad men stalking the city and I hold up my hands to some party responsible. It hasn't cost us a penny, but they're issuing fines for people for leisuring, right? And that's going to be for a year. We hope that we can develop more so with the Liverpool House and fund that service. But that's one of the ways we look, is finding different ways of delivering service that catches up on the savings that we're making. One of the key things we're doing for Liverpool Street See Services, and I do report this regularly to the National Select Committee and Council of Brown and Dent's staff, who hopefully listens to my reports, which are lengthy, as you well know. Because we talk about when we use the new company in training to find savings and develop new business. So, just remember, there's a difference between a saving. There are some cuts in the budget, not many actually. We've done an incredible job of generating new income, finding savings. But when you talk about a cut, which is what you're proposing in the labour fund, that's a cut, it's not a saving, finally. Why on earth do you want to inflict those cuts on the other ones? Something would happen to another council to have a referendum, except to look good. So, try and do good, not look good, and use my own property.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Mitchell, please.
What's your call, Mr. Jen? I'm usually wise about, I do have a purely interest, and therefore I don't need to change that. I'm a computer, I thought I had a tent. First of all, for your permission, just a very quick version from the grace of Sammy. You will be called, my Lord Mayor. A phone call I made to you on Saturday afternoon, five, six years ago, I had a concussion with a vulnerable woman who was attempting to kill herself, I've actually sent you my photos. Very quickly, within minutes, you got Sammy, I got a phone call back from Sammy, who reacted with incredible speed. We had people round the house, saved that woman's life that afternoon. That woman is now fit and well and has her children back. It's a key part of this, of this city, and that because of Sammy's care, speed is one. He saved that woman's life that day, thank you. Just on the green amendment, ah, do you know what, sometimes I despair. It's a vanity project, the whole idea that we can win a referendum has some attraction to some of us who'd quite like to go round the streets, saying, what are you going to do? You can vote for, we go in and support us and protecting certain things. And you know what, to our face, they may well say, yes, 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 absolutely. But when they go into the ballot box, they will reject it, because that's the way of the world. What we have to do is do exactly what we're doing. When I came in today, I was so confused, because we are not taking austerity seriously. Well, we had a sharp exchange of views. Because we fought austerity since the day we came to power. We fought it by saving children's centres, saving libraries, saving sports centres, working in the limits, in the limits. In this particular budget, I am particularly proud of the council that supports it, the council that supports you. Do you know what? We have protected the forty thousand poorest people in this city by finding that one. And I give you a lie to every person that accuses us of passing on the government's cuts. The government's cuts, no! So, my message to Tom and the Green Party, and I know you're all committed and I know your passion, and I don't need that attitude, I don't need it. Please, sometimes, join us in the real world, support this budget, withdraw your amendment. We need to work together to assuage the terrible impact that the cuts bring on us. It's a vanity project, fully.
And, Peter, and the Council of Crome, please.
Are you all with it? I want to say too. When you said in nineteen nineties, the Liberal Party, great time and effort to explain to people that ninety-six percent of property was out in band A and band B. And we were constantly criticised by the Liberal Democrats about band D being the highest in the country. And you can never understand that except band B, by weighing out the balance, three levels below, three levels above. And if you've got a lot of properties in band A and B, you have to raise the minimum to get the same amount of money. They wouldn't accept it. Until it's all controlled, when Council of Lucas spends some of my fifteen thousand pounds preparing a video to take down a building to show how this balance is going, it doesn't work in Liverpool. It didn't work there, it still doesn't work now, I think we've got around ninety-two percent now in A and B. So, we've gone from ninety-six to ninety...